Meeting will come to order. Thanks for being here. Welcome to this special Mercer Island City Council meeting. We're holding the special meeting of the City Council to receive a staff briefing on the boil water advisory, which is now in effect on Mercer Island. And Allie, you're up now.
Okay. It's my call?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Councilmember Debbie Burtland.
Here.
Councilmember Jane Braun. Councilmember Mike Sero.
Here.
Councilmember Thompsonson. Councilmember Benson Wong.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Dan Gross.
Here.
Mayor Bruce Bassett.
Here. Thank you very much. The order of events today, normally we would have a public comment period at the beginning of a meeting, but although we always want to hear from our citizens and we are very actively hearing from and communicating with them at the moment, we're going to forego the regular public comment period and move directly to the staff reports that were intending to be the heart of this meeting. To frame the meeting, Noel and I would propose three steps to this, and councilmembers, I lay this out and ask for your support in going this way, but if you think we ought to go a different way, say so. But first, a report by Bob James of the State Health Department. Second, a report by Glenn Becker and Terry Smith on the work going on in the field. And third, a report by Ross Freeman on the public communication, public outreach, and related topics, including vulnerable citizen outreach, business outreach, and what's going on with the schools. Sound okay to you? Okay? We can add more in at the end if we need to. With that, then we will launch directly into asking the Health Department to come forward and give us a report and take questions.
Yeah, I just, thank you, Bruce. And I just wanted to take a quick opportunity to thank all our staff that have been working really around the clock. We've activated our EOC, as you know. We're rotating staff through and we're working as hard as we can to get this resolved quickly. You'll hear about some of those efforts here in a minute. And I also wanted to thank our partners at the State Department of Health and King County, Seattle Public Health as well. They've been very helpful in helping try and get this resolved. And the other point I wanted to make is just, we've got this booked for an hour and a half, and I'm hoping we can stick to that. The staff that are in the room right now are the key staff that need to get back out in the field and get back out working on this. So if we could try and really stick to that timeframe, I know it'd be much appreciated. This room serves as our EOC, so we'd like to get it set back up quickly once this meeting's concluded. So, thank you.
Okay. Bob, welcome.
Well, good afternoon. My name is Bob James. I'm the regional manager of the Northwest Regional Office of the Washington State Department of Health, the Drinking Water Program. We work out of Kent. I have been working with the city staff and with public health, Seattle and King County, and others in our agency to respond to the E. coli contamination that we've seen. We've been out here pretty much every day since last Saturday with the initial health advisory was issued, working with the city on looking at things such as sampling, looking at response times, looking at trying to get chlorine residuals elevated throughout the water system, doing field inspections of the above-ground facilities, and trying to assist the city and trying to investigate where this contaminant source might be located. We've looked over those sampling plans, and again, last Monday, we felt comfortable that enough sampling has been done, and our visual inspections of the facilities did not uncover any problems, that we felt somewhat comfortable in lifting the health advisory. It came clearly somewhat of a surprise to us to find us back again on Thursday, the result of a single E. coli positive sample and a total coliform positive sample collected from the Mercer Island distribution system. Since that time, we've been here working with city crews, not only to look at the health advisories and the media releases that have gone out, but also looking at a sampling program and, again, additional response activities in light of the E. coli contamination. So we've been trying to advise the city where we can with our experience in these types of matters, to try to look at ways to sample the system, to not only see our mitigation efforts succeeding, are they able to help us identify a potential source of contamination, and really try to direct some of the activities that we're doing. Again, we clearly appreciate the city and the actions it's taken, and we appreciate the work of our partners, Public Health Seattle and King County, and certainly our staff at the Department of Health in trying to respond to this situation. I would be happy to try and answer any questions people have, or if you want to wait for the other folks to give you their update. Again, we intend to be here throughout and to be working with the city in, again, looking at test results and looking at inspections and activities that are conducted, and, again, trying to work through this whole process. So, be happy to entertain any questions.
Okay. Thank you for that. Councilmembers, you want to wait until we hear from Glenn and Terry first and then come back? Okay. Phil, come on up.
And Glenn and Terry, thanks for being here. I know you've got some work you need to get right back to. But one thing we want to be sure to hit on, whether it's you all or Bob, is just helping council understand at what sampling stations who have the negative finding, who found the E. coli and the total coliform, just, so if you want to work that in as we talked about, we'll do that. Maybe we can do that after Terry and I initially talk about what's been happening on the operations and for the last several days. So our focus right now is increasing our sampling with the DOH's guidance. We have been collecting six samples up to twice a day in the last several days. We are starting today expanding that to 18 samples a day. The purpose there is to get a more complete snapshot with each sampling of what's happening with the water quality on the island. As you heard, our results this morning were all clear, which is a good sign. That still doesn't deal with the cause of the contamination, which has been a second direction for us in the last several days. We have inspected the reservoirs and sampled the reservoirs. No sign of a problem there. We will have divers going into the tanks early tomorrow morning to make sure there's nothing that we could have missed that might be on the outside of the tank. Active construction sites on the island are being evaluated through Development Services. DOH is helping us look at our backflow prevention program. That started this morning. We are looking at even the smallest components of the system, anything that could collect water that could become contaminated and somehow get back in the system, air vacuums and anything that's in a vault. That's also happening. We've looked at our records of breaks. There's no indication of any event that we're aware of that would have allowed the pressure in the system to release to the point that something could have backflowed in and caused the contamination. The additional chlorine treatment of the water started last evening with help from SPU. They had crews mobilized, and we're here early evening. We have started the process of raising the chlorine level to a point that we think it should take care of any problem in the system. That's happening through a direct injection into the system, and that will continue as long as we need to. The next step down the road would be some additional flushing of the system where it seems to be appropriate. What we've done to date is developed a very complete picture of what's happening with the water system, and there isn't a single cause that jumps out at us. And as Bob and Terry can talk more about, the pattern of the results we've received don't make sense. They don't lead us down a certain path.
Terry, you want to add?
There's nothing more I can add. That's very concise. It's perfectly stated.
Okay. And I overheard, too, Noel and Glenn were talking earlier, you've got several crews in the field at this point. You've got folks from Bellevue who are going to be over helping.
We won't have Bellevue over until we actually get that chlorine level up within the system to make sense to start pulling it through our system. So we're in that process. We're going to bring our tank levels up tonight. We have identified how late we're going to be here, and we've got some different measures in place, which I need to work with crews on additionally. But once we do see some raising of the chlorine with our sampling, then we'll know that it's actually working as we wish.
Okay. Can we go to council member questions if you...
Maybe this would be good, Terry, for the overview of what's happened with the sampling process, with the positives.
Why don't you run through that for us?
So if you take a look at the map, the city of Mercer Island has five sample stations. They're located pretty much from the northwest tip, there's Mercer Island Station Number Three, and then coming down, you intercept with Sample Station Number Four, Sample Station Number Five. Towards the center of the island is Sample Station Number Two, and then at the south end of the system is Sample Station Number One. So those are sampling stands that are designed by the city of Seattle. They are connected directly to the distribution system. Their intent is to collect water that is representative of the distribution system. The water constantly flows through those sample stands, so you're constantly getting the water that is right there at the distribution pipe itself. There's a constant flow rate of water. So our initial concerns there happened essentially a week ago. Samples were collected up in the northwest corner at Sample Station Number Three. Sample Station Number Three had a relatively low chlorine residual, something around .25. Those results indicated a problem out in that area, and from that point on, we've been collecting roughly almost daily samples from each one of those five sampling sites. On Saturday morning, again, we discovered four of those locations. I should point out, we have the First Hill Pump Station. That's also become another sampling site. It serves a small pressure zone up in what they call First Hill. So, again, we've been collecting six samples, and on Saturday, we received the results that four out of six samples collected from those locations were E. coli positive. And that's what sent most of this in motion with the health advisory that went out. So, again, one of the questions was, there was low chlorine residual in that northwest part of the system, and so immediately, one, we started to, the city crews started to flush that area to see if they could get stronger chlorine residuals. We also, well, I keep saying "we," but Mercer Island sent its crews out to monitor chlorine residuals throughout the distribution system to see if there were any other low spots where there were low chlorine residuals. So we must have collected 30 to 40 samples to look for low chlorine residual areas and to flush those immediate areas, again, to increase the chlorine levels throughout the entire system. Samples were collected Saturday morning. Those were read out on Sunday morning. The results indicated that one sample was total coliform positive. Again, by that time, we had finished an inspection of the two storage tanks and the booster pump stations to see if there were any concerns there that we could identify above ground. Our indication would suggest we didn't see anything unusual at all on the above-ground facilities. During all this time, the city of Seattle continues to collect samples. They collect approximately 200 samples from throughout the region, from their wholesale customers and their direct service area. None of those sample results have indicated any presence of total coliform or E. coli bacteria in any of their sample results. Taking a look at the chlorine residuals that comes across the East Channel, those chlorine residuals have been pretty much consistently at .8 to one part per million. That would suggest a very strong chlorine residual coming into the city. We began to collect samples out of the storage tank, both the inlet and the outlet, to see if we could track anything back to the storage tank. Those, in all of the sampling that's been done at the storage tank themselves, we haven't seen any evidence of contamination there. So consequently, on Monday morning, we got another set of six sample results. Those samples, again, only contained one sample with total coliform, no E. coli. So we felt somewhat confident that maybe this was, for all having a lack of a better term, maybe a slug of water that had made its way through the system, but we weren't seeing any evidence of additional E. coli contamination. So we lifted the health advisory. We did one set of samples at that one positive sample site, which was MI4, to see if we could understand what was going on with the total coliform test result we got there. That was also the positive total coliform test result location on Sunday, so was there something specific to that location? Those sample results, which became known on Tuesday, were free and clear of total coliform. We didn't find anything. Samples collected on Tuesday were read out on Wednesday, and once again, we didn't find any evidence of either total or E. coli contamination. But we had worked together with the city staff to continue monitoring, just to make sure that we were free and clear. And as, you know, unfortunately, samples collected on Wednesday that were read out on Thursday, we had six samples collected, again, from these same sites, and the site at Sample Station Five showed E. coli was present, and the sample result down at Sample Station One showed that total coliform was present at that location. And that then prompted us to go, can we distinguish whether there are two separate incidents or one? There is not enough information to separate it into two incidents. So, again, after consultation, it was our belief we had to associate with the samples collected earlier in the week, take all of that collective data that we had, and, again, go out with the health advisory once again. Point out a little bit about our standard procedure in responding to E. coli contamination. Typically, we start looking at the source of supply. We then look at treatment. Then we look at storage facilities and above-ground facilities. Then we look at the distribution system. In this particular case, the city of Seattle owns and operates the sources of supply, and they are also the utility that provides all of the treatment of the supply. And, again, based upon Seattle's results, we have no indication to believe that it's at the Seattle portion of the regional system. Our field inspection of the storage tanks and the pump station is the next step that we do. And then we start to look as best we can at what's going on out in the distribution system. Again, ask about pressures, ask about water main breaks, any unusual construction, anything of those, of that type, that could have led to contamination out in the distribution system. You also have to keep in mind, you know, sample collection. And so, again, it's our hope that the sample stands are representative of what's in the distribution system. They were designed to provide that information to everyone. Take a look at how the crew actually collects the sample, how they fill that sample bottle. And then we take all the samples to a certified laboratory with lab technicians that are well-versed in how to identify coliform and E. coli bacteria in a water sample. So we went, once again, to look at those protocols, and in the sampling protocols, we haven't seen anything of concern there in how the samples are obtained, how the sample sites, where they're located, and, again, have no reason to believe that there's a problem at the laboratory. So, again, to try to follow up, both looking at it, looking physically at the system, how samples are collected and analyzed, and, again, looking at the water quality as best we can through chlorine residual and coliform sample test results.
Go ahead and update us to the latest in terms of sample findings.
So yesterday, following the notification that E. coli was present in the system, there were two sample sets collected from the sample stands and the First Hill Pump Station. Those sample sets were collected approximately two or three hours apart. Those samples were taken then to the Seattle Public Utilities Laboratory. They were analyzed, and the results indicate that all 12 of those samples, the two sets of six, were coliform-free, did not show any evidence of coliform or E. coli contamination. Later in the day yesterday, we went back to the reservoirs and were able to collect three samples from the reservoirs on Thursday afternoon. Those results were read out recently, and those did not show any evidence of either total coliform or E. coli contamination.
Thank you. Should we go to council questions? Or, I guess the only other thing I'd say is, Bob, great job summarizing the sequence of events here. I think for all of our benefit, if you, Glenn and Terry, could talk a little bit more about, so what is this action that you're taking now, and what are you attempting to achieve with crews in the field? What are they out there actually doing?
We are sampling, which takes about half a day per crew. We have, we've increased our number of samples to 18. Fortunately, SPU stepped up to help us take six of those. We started doing some residential locations, eight different locations we have never done before, so we had the, it was very nice for the citizens to allow us to use their outside faucets for this purpose. Anything they can do to assist us through this, they were very willing. With that, we are spending the extra time at the reservoir with the SPU crew during their induction of additional chlorine into our system, so that we can raise the level to help counteract what may be in the system. It's, our levels, we're at 1.0. We are inducing water at about the levels of 1.7 currently. That only happens during the inflow to our system, so someone has to be on-site all the time. We can't do it during off-hours. SPU graciously worked last night until nine o'clock with us, and we're in discussion now how late they will be here today. So that was, that's one piece. We're beginning to go out and check our vaults. It was recommended by DOH with many of their wonderful ideas. We look for anything that may be submerged, and that's part of our next We'll look for anything that may be submerged, and that's part of our next process. We have, which was identified, we have, by Dan, we have some areas that have lower than desired chlorine levels. We did go out on our first weekend and check essentially the entire island. I think Dan mentioned there's around thirty or so. I think we were probably upwards of eighty. We checked an enormous amount of the island. And we did find some areas that needed to be addressed. So, we've been working on that in between other duties that we have had to assist with in working with SPU and others. That has been taking a half a day per crew each. We're responding right now to two different areas that are giving us a little difficulty raising that chlorine. With the grid system the way we have it, it's broken up into many, many tributaries, and depending upon use, that helps us keep chlorine to certain levels. Lower use means sometimes not as fresh of water, and the chlorine isn't quite as active. So, we're looking at those, following up on those. The divers, they came up and they assessed our situation for us today at noon. They need our water level to be higher to safely enter, and so we made arrangements that they'll be here tomorrow morning at eight o'clock to inspect both of our tanks. We have purchased some additional chlorine pucks like people use for their swimming pools, and we will have the divers insert those while they're in the tanks to give us an additional chlorine boost. So, we're doing everything we can so we can try to evenly distribute that chlorine in the tank instead of it just being layered. There is no circulation within the tanks, so that's part of what we face. I think that's pretty much it.
Thank you.
An issue that's, or a question that's been asked repeatedly is, given that we've had results at different places, both good and bad, is there a way for a single source of contamination to have reached those various points? That's something we've talked extensively about, and I will leave it to Terry and Bob as the experts to talk about that a little bit.
Well, with respect to that, I think our thoughts are to work radially out from the storage tanks. Since all water passes through that location, it makes sense, from our perspective, that inspections start near the storage tanks and work out to see if we can find something. Again, the majority of the E. coli positive test results, if you can say that, would be from Sites 4 and 5, which are relatively close to the tank location. So, it makes sense to work our way from the tank out. And so, that's what we'll be doing on most of the work that's done of that nature, is try to look in close to the tanks and then move the inspections out away from the tanks.
Thank you all. It was, I think, a great summary for us, and we'll go to council questions if you're ready for that. Mike, you had your hand up.
Thank you. So, I'm going to say mischievous activities out there unlikely as the root cause?
I think that would be challenging for something like that to happen. Again, as I've tried to say, E. coli is really susceptible to chlorination. So, again, the chlorine that is in the pipe itself should be enough to counteract E. coli relatively quickly. So, again, it's unusual that we're finding this kind of a situation, but, again, somebody thinking of going down that pathway would say it's chlorinated. How successful would an E. coli threat be? It would be challenging to think that that would result in a significant threat. The other thing we have to keep in mind as we look at this is, the water age, the age of the water throughout the distribution system varies. So, it could take hours, days to reach portions of your distribution system. So, coming up with the idea that you could determine, one, how long it would take for a specific contaminant, a drop of water, if you will, to reach a sampling location, and then know that somebody will be collecting a sample at that same time to find it, would be remote. I think it would be extremely challenging. So, you might do something that would never be discovered, so.
I wanted to, I just wanted to get that behind us. I want to talk about the relationship between E. coli hot readings and chlorines. You mentioned on your MI3 station, our first one tested positive, and we had a chlorine level of .25. And then you talked about four more hot tests. What, on those hot tests, what were the chlorine levels of those hot tests? And what I'm driving to is, is the issue just because our distribution of chlorine was too low to keep the threshold of E. coli under wraps?
Some, a number of the E. coli positive test results were with chlorine residuals around .7, .8. So, we've seen it at those sample locations with, well, with fairly strong chlorine levels, so.
So, I'd like to get down, so what is the, what is the range that we're supposed to have our chlorine at?
Well, I think the city would hope to be able to see chlorine above, I'll say, .5.
What is our, what's the range for our chlorine?
.5 is our target. We don't set it. We receive it. So, when we find low readings such as MI3, when we were first notified that it was at .25, we immediately shot up there and started flushing the system because that is a suspect range that we're not comfortable with.
So, the hot E. coli readings, they were all, can you give me a quantitative measurement on fifty percent, forty percent, or below .5, or above .5, or something to that effect?
I can only provide you kind of with an estimate, but I think probably eighty percent of the sample results that were positive for E. coli, the chlorine residuals were probably .7 or greater. Again, we haven't seen another E. coli positive test result from that Sample Station 3, which has been a problem spot for chlorine residuals. So, we haven't seen it come back there. They've been right there at four and five primarily, and that is coming pretty much right out of the storage tank. There's not a lot of time lapsed between the time it's in the storage tank to the time it reaches those two sampling locations.
And I appreciate that. I'm curious, Mr. Mayor, if you'll give me, and show me our hot readings, and also the chlorine readings of each one of those hot readings.
Yes, and the sheet you have there has that data up through the thirtieth?
Up through the thirtieth. That doesn't cover three days.
Right. We will, we're going to get that updated. Obviously, Terry and his crew need to be in the fields as well, but we're working on trying to bring that up today, and we've got the data to do that.
Benson?
I just want to continue, well, first of all, thank you for all the hard work you guys have put in, all the hours. I have, just to follow up on the chlorine issue, so you talk about these chlorine boosts. And I guess my question is, obviously, it's intended to kill the E. coli bacteria. How long does the boost last? And I think somebody mentioned that we'll continue to do these chlorine boosts, that at some point, you know, those are going to stop. And I guess my concern is, when we stop the chlorine boost, is there, presumably, there's a chance that the E. coli is going to return because we don't know where the source is? Is that correct?
Well, my belief is that, again, we've got a response plan that is somewhat, you know, we'll continue to progress through that response plan, but at some time, flushing is a part of that plan. So, it would conceivably be taking that elevated chlorine dose, flushing it through the system. With that, hopefully, if we can't find the source, hopefully eliminating the source, and then we continue to maintain our regular chlorine residuals and hopefully prevent the regrowth of that E. coli bacteria. So, it's one to treat it at the moment and continue the flushing, and hopefully, we eliminate that source, whatever it might be, and continue with chlorine residuals to hopefully make sure that it doesn't regrow. So, again, hopefully, it's relatively temporary in nature when we'd be looking at these elevated levels. But if we can get those elevated levels out in the distribution system working and flushing those out, then hopefully, we can prevent regrowth-type situations from occurring.
And how long do you think that process is going to take? You guys started, I guess, yesterday.
Yeah, based on, from what I understand, based on this morning's results, this is going to be an ongoing process for a while, perhaps days. We saw a marked boost for a temporary time, but we treated about 500,000 gallons last night. We have, in the tanks at any one time, as much as seven million gallons in storage.
Thank you. Again, thank you for all your hard work over the past week especially. How common is it to not find the source of an E. coli contamination in a situation like this?
I would have to say that in the majority of the cases, I would have to say we can't positively identify the source. Most of our experience is with unchlorinated systems, and typically, again, we go out and we review and inspect the facilities with the utility and try to identify potential pathways for the contamination to occur. So, that might be vents that are poorly screened. It could be openings, glaring openings, or deficiencies in treatment. And we try to correct those deficiencies that we see. Whether or not contamination actually entered through those openings or those deficiencies, we may never know that. So, we try to correct anything that looks out of place, needs to be correcting. Typically, we end up then disinfecting the system if it's an unchlorinated supply and flushing that water through the system. So, in a majority of the cases we have, we don't find the source. We usually just treat the symptoms, fix what needs to be fixed, get the disinfection working. So, this is the unusual event here where we have a chlorinated system. We'll look at increasing the levels, continue to sample, flush again. So, this represents a little bit of a different challenge for us.
And Terry, you mentioned that you were looking for submerged items in the vaults. Can you give us a little bit more information of what you might be looking for?
Just, within our vaults, if there's any possibility that we have a pipe that can by vacuum cause draw drainage water back into our domestic water supply, so with a negative pressure event of some nature. And we're just making sure that we don't have leaks. We would have water overflowing out of the vaults, and we would have had it reported. We do maintain our pressures. We're aware of it. We have our telemetry that tells us that by the minute. So, we're just monitoring that, or we're going to make some physical site assessments just to confirm.
One last one, if I may. I think that for some people, it might sound that when we talk about sampling, that that seems like a passive approach, meaning just that we're, you know, waiting, we're taking samples, but we're not doing anything actively, proactively. And I'm just wondering if you can, if you could answer that concern a little bit, and, you know, if you have a backup in your house, you might call the plumber, and they put a snake down the pipes and things like that. Can you talk about a little bit how you look at the system other than through the vaults? Just, I think that's probably on a lot of people's minds.
Well, the vaults was just one piece. So, the most important piece right now is for us to get that chlorine boost. And at that point, once we get that into our system and we successfully can accomplish that, then we can begin some flushing, both with the help of just normal usage, people are going to draw water through our lines, and our assistance by pulling water throughout. So, that would be the prime source. Then we have the other areas of which we have to check, go off our checklist to look for the possibilities. The construction that Glenn alluded to, those sites, any new connections to our system that have been made, making sure that they were done properly, which that has pretty much been reported back to us, that we are okay with those. One of the things that we look for is any common activity up around our reservoir site because if it was in that vicinity, then the likelihood of it being distributed throughout the system is far greater than if there was a construction activity, say, at the south tip of the island, it wouldn't reach the north tip. So, we're just systematically going through all these ideas. Sampling is imperative because it helps us try to identify sources. The frustration we've had with this is it seems to be moving. And not only does it seem to be moving, then we come back with a couple days of negative readings that says, everything looks okay. We think it's passed. And then it rears its head once again, and we start looking again.
Casper Sim, I might add that we've literally had people out in the field, so I would hope that they understand that we're doing a lot of things right now for the past eleven days straight, something like that. So, there isn't a neighborhood that we haven't been to more than once over the last week plus.
Dan, Debbie, I'm not sure. Okay.
You know, one of the great things about Mercer Island is people like to fix things. And, you know, the feedback that I've been getting from the community is, you know, first, let's make sure that the communication branches that we have extend far and wide, and I know that the city and everybody's doing a lot in that regard to make sure that important information is distributed. So, again, appreciation to everybody who's worked intense hours lately on that one. You know, the second one is, is I think we're doing our best to manage the situation, as you said, in terms of flushing, in terms of chlorination, making sure water's accessible. But again, you know, Mercer Islanders, I think, want to help. You know, they want to be constructive in this process. They probably want to help their neighbors. They want to help extended community. But what can they do, if anything, with regard to their own homes or things that they might look for in public facilities or in open areas that might, you know, have somebody cite something that we hadn't seen before? Is there anything visible that the community could look for that would help you in this process? Or is this something that's going to happen literally within the bowels of the system?
Casper, one thing that I, that's the other side that we service. We bring the water in and we take the water out, yeah. With one of Ross's publications, he did reach out to the citizens. And I had a call last evening on a, or I should say, our EOC did, was passed on to me with a resident that was working on the irrigation backflow system. They wanted to make sure. I thought that was just terrific. I had a call just before coming down here, this wire was running a little late. Another individual down in East Mercer Way, they worked on their drainage system a couple months ago. They wanted to confirm that it did not impact the water system in any way, shape, or form. So, putting that feeler out there, that thought process out there to the citizens, we've had a couple, and people have continued to talk. And with our crews, they come in daily, and they tell me how wonderful the citizens of Mercer Islands have been. It's just terrific to hear. You kind of think that after this second incident, they'd be getting a little bit uncomfortable. We're hearing positives. They're very appreciative.
Anything that they should look for, or just continue with perhaps some of the proactive? We worked on our backflow system. We worked on our irrigation system, et cetera?
Those are pretty much it because if, the one thing that we could add to it is if at any point in time, they lost water. If they lost water, there is a concern. Now, we did have one water main break. It was a few weeks back, maybe up to six weeks back. Timeframe's not exact to me. Up in the vicinity of the high school. Repaired by our crews, repaired properly, valves shut off, no negative reverse pressure. We didn't suck contaminants back into the main. Everything was done properly with our hydro excavator. Those types of things, if it was done outside of city forces, would be a concern that we'd want to look into.
If I might also add, back on the topic of backflow prevention, we want to make sure beyond a shadow of a doubt that there aren't any backflow prevention devices that could have been installed that we don't know about. We can only require inspections of those devices we know about. So, if anyone might be in a home and they don't receive letters from us annually asking for them to get an inspection done and provide us the results of the inspection, then we need to look at that.
Glenn, on that line, how many of our backflow preventers out there are six months, twelve months, or eighteen months overdue?
I don't know that number. We've just started looking. That program has run out of, actually, different department, and we're just starting to look at those numbers. I think our, I don't know how many have been installed in the last six or twelve months. I know that our inspection rate is fairly high, people complying. At this point, we're really worried about those that we may not know about.
I'd like to know that stat, too. Six, twelve, and eighteen months overdue. That doesn't count, I'm sorry.
All right. I'm still letting you guys work it out. Debbie, are you done? Okay, Dan, to you.
Hi, thanks. Let me also echo what other people have said, this appreciation for everything that the three of you, as well as a lot of other staff members have done on this situation. I just want to explore a few things. The chlorination, so as I understand it, normally, the chlorination is all done by SPU. We don't add, typically, Mercer Island doesn't add any chlorine to the system?
That's correct.
And so that if, and, but we verified that the chlorine coming into the reservoirs is at an appropriate level, so, but it's is at an appropriate level, so, but it's somehow dropping between the reservoirs and the test stations. What would typically cause the chlorine levels to drop if, since there's nothing we normally do on chlorination, it's all coming from SPU?
Well, I'll start. Again, the city does have a chlorine residual analyzer at the storage facilities. It rotates through five different sampling locations, the inlets to both tanks, the outlets to both tanks, and at the booster pump station. So it's continually giving information to the city crews on what the chlorine residual levels are coming into the tanks and going out of the tanks. Out within the distribution system, we've talked a little bit about the age of the water. Again, as the water flows through the distribution system, chlorine does have a tendency to dissipate over time. Now, some of that may be in part because of interactions, chemical interactions taking place at the cell wall. You have a lot of unlined cast iron. Any disruptions in the sediment layer and some of those types of things would change the chemistry. If you change the chemistry, it might reduce the oxidizing, the disinfecting efficiency of the chlorine right there at the cell wall. So it remains to be seen whether or not that is, you know, we're not seeing counts of chlorine residuals of zero. But again, we are seeing lower levels. So it could be water age, the pathway the water takes to get to a certain location. And then it could be the chemical interaction between chlorine and what's happening there at the pipe wall with sediments that have accumulated over time. And the oxidation reduction potential right there at the cell wall could see a dissipation in the amount of chlorine that then is available to counteract bacteria and viruses and those types of things.
And I assume as part of this whole process, you know, clearly if the chlorine levels could drop down to point, what was it, point two-five back in September, they can drop down there again, that there'll be some recommendations coming out of this as to how we maintain, ensure we maintain higher chlorine levels throughout the system? Because I just, I just found it a little bit hard to figure out what we should be doing since we don't put the chlorine in the system normally. So if there's something that we need to do to our system to do that going forward, that's going to be a critical piece of, you know, learning from this. Secondly, so at what level of chlorine does E. coli get killed? Is it a, do we have a sense of that?
Well, there is research that's been done. And if you take a look at the research that I did, we usually look at chlorine and we say it's effective based upon the concentration of the chlorine and the amount of time that the chlorine is in contact with the water. And typically, to get 99.99% reduction in E. coli, that would take place when you multiply concentration times time in minutes at point two-five. So again, if your chlorine at one part per million is totally effective, you would expect to see that after 15 seconds, E. coli, with E. coli, you would see a reduction of 99.99% of all the E. coli that was in that sample. So it's rapid. So that says to all of us, E. coli is very sensitive to chlorine and reacts rapidly to chlorination. So that's what makes this somewhat peculiar, is E. coli is one of the most susceptible organisms to chlorine. And so why are we finding it when we have a chlorinated supply? So again, it happens rapidly.
Terry, do you want to say something?
Yes, I may, I may. I'd like to add a few things, Councillor McGraw. We have an annual water main flushing program. We do that intentionally to keep our water fresh, to keep our chlorine levels at a higher rate for this purpose. We also fluctuate the levels in our tanks seasonally so that that water is fresh and the chlorine levels remain high. One oddity that's occurred with this incident is our chlorine levels are higher and our water use is higher because of the time of year. You get into a November-January period of time, there's less use. Now, there's less use now than what it used to be with conservation, so there's not as much water running through the pipes as we once had. We actively look at these. Point two-five, it isn't a concerning number, it's an order number, and I know it might say the same thing. Point two is a target for SPU when they, when they report the overall wholesale system. I don't like to see it get that low. So that's why we responded so quickly on the point two-five.
So switching gears a little bit, in this, in this latest round, where the bad results came from the testing station pretty much closest to the reservoir, Testing Station 5A. Is our piping system such that, does that tell you that the problem has to be between the reservoir and Testing Station 5A? Is it, or is it, I mean, it just seems intuitive to me that there's, you've got a relatively small distance of a few blocks that, and if it's clean at the reservoir and it's contaminated at 5A, then you've got a relatively short distance within which you're trying to figure out what the problem area is? Or is that just too, much too simplistic?
It makes absolute sense. The grids off of the main line that feeds from that reservoir site, there's a residential area and it has six-inch AC that is due to be replaced this coming year. It isn't, it's a direct feed, yes. But depending upon how that water is looped around, because there's actually two mains that feed it. There's one on the north, one on the south, it's a looped system. So it's a tough one. It's a tough one to trace and the fact that it's there one day and not the next, that makes it more difficult.
You also have it up on three of those other ones.
No, I was talking about, but the most recent, the most recent incident. I mean, I don't, like, we don't, we don't have the test results after September 30th in front of us. But I'm assuming that if we did, it would show that for October 1st, everything was clean except for Test Station 5. I mean, for, I guess you took the samples on the 30th and then the results came back on the 1st and everything was clean except for Test Station 5?
And one.
And one. One was just, one was total coliform, wasn't E. coli. So the only one that had E. coli was Station 5. So I'm just, and I'm sure, this is what, I just, so we can explain this to the public, I'm just trying to understand whether there's, you know, if we went, is there some, like, circle, you could do a quarter mile radius or something up between, a bit of a line between Test Station 5 and the reservoir and, you know, do a, do a blanket, you know, do an intense sampling in that, in that area just to figure out what's going on between those two points?
Well, and we try our best to do such. And in the case that we had the total coliform at MI-1 down on the south end, the water gets there bypassing through MI-2. And we're okay. So how did it get by? Did we miss it during our test? We did it the same day. So we don't, that's where we got into testing procedures and it's, you're exactly, your thought process is very, very good. I don't have that answer. I wish I did.
I think, I think to support what you're saying, we are focusing at the reservoir and working out with all of the inspections. I think you're advising, they're suggesting to take additional coliform samples within that area between the sample site and the reservoir. And again, again, there may be potential sites that we could look at. We could look at, take a look at where we've been collecting those samples. Again, maybe a shortcut would be taking a look at chlorine residuals and see if there's some really low areas somehow and some dead-end stub-out lines in that area. So we can, we can take a look at the sampling sites we've identified and see if there appears to be some sites that would warrant some sample collection in that area.
And I'm not for a moment suggesting I know how to do this. All I'm saying is that just from a layman's perspective, you've got point A, which is clean, and point B, which is not clean. And you would think they're within a, literally, probably 500 yards of each other. And that the answer lies somewhere within that 500-yard space and that's just, and I'm sure you guys have done that. So Bob, one other question on this round, the, is, so we've now had a set of clean samples. And then you're going to, we're taking 18 samples today, I assume. And we'll get those results tomorrow morning. And let's say they're clean. So what, what happens next? I mean, apparently the state has to tell us whether we can end this, end this emergency. Is, what does it take for you?
Clearly, our intent is to continue to consult with the city of Mercer Island and collectively reach conclusions. But I like to think of it as two pathways we're following. One pathway is to continue to collect daily sample sets to give us an indication of what the water quality is currently. And so over time, those numbers of samples will, the results that we have will continue to increase. I think it's all of our hope that all of those will be satisfactory sample results indicating that the water appears to be safe to drink. So that's one timeline we're moving on. The other timeline I like to envision is we're making progress on our response plan. And we will continue to work with the city to implement the response plan. And if you will, I tend to see it as two lines intersecting. And at some point in time, we will all conclude we've got enough samples showing good results, kind of intersecting with we've made significant progress on our response plan to the point where all of us involved are saying, boy, I think we've, we can now say that we believe we have safe water, knowing all the while that we have to continue to look at that response plan, continue to make progress there, and continue to collect samples to make sure we don't experience this thing again. But there's going to come a point, and I wish I could say, and it's after so many samples, but there's going to come a time when the number of samples and our progress with the response plan are going to convince all of us that we think the water is now safe to drink. And again, I wish I could tell you what that point is, where they intersect, but we're going to continue to make progress on the response plan and we're going to continue to sample. And I'm confident there's going to be this point where we all feel confident with telling the customers of Mercer Island that the water is safe to drink, knowing that there's always a risk that the next sample could show something different. Or have we progressed as far as we really want to on the response plan? I think our goal is, there's going to be an intersection of those two lines, if you will, that are going to make us feel comfortable about the decision that we're going to make.
Okay, just, we're going to go Mike, Tana, Benson, but I want to let you know that the person from Seattle and King County Public Health has a limited time. They can stay here. So if you want to hear about restaurant situation and markets, we need to get to that. How soon? Quickly? Minutes?
We can wait a couple of minutes, but soon would be ideal so we can follow up with our inspectors and deal.
Okay. Well, you guys all had questions, sorry.
I actually have a question along that line. I mean, that's a huge responsibility for somebody to make that type of decision. I would think that there's a manual or matrix, decision matrix, that you can give us more clarification on when we have three days, two days worth of negative readings after having one positive or something like that. You can't quantify the number of readings that have to be cleared. Because like I said, that's, it's to your, it's to your and to yours and yours help that we can explain that to our citizens versus when we kind of feel like it's right. Can you give us a sense of a decision matrix that is there to guide the leaders?
If you look at historically at our program, we've typically followed that response plan and taking samples. We've usually felt that the response activities by the utilities, coupled with two satisfactory sample sets, have typically given us the belief that the water was safe to drink. That's the thought process that we were going through earlier in the week. And we discovered again that E. coli can occur after that. So, so again, that's the risk that comes with trying to say two sample sets and what we discovered in our own example right here. So that's why, you know, I'm convinced we're going to find that, that intersecting point. But again, the matrix, the historic matrix, would suggest doing your response plan and two sample sets.
And we're going through this next iteration, we're at what sample set number?
We've got one sample set in that was result, that I would read, everything that we came today, I would conclude to be one sample set.
So the next sample set will be read tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
And then we're just at, that's when the leaders get together and start seeing if the lines cross?
Right. And how much progress we've made on all the inspections.
The last question I have, when you say flush, I want to be clear that we're talking at the same level. So when you say flush, are you talking that at every cul-de-sac, the lines have been flushed? Or are you just saying that the main supply lines of the island have been flushed? Because I think it's real important, especially the mechanics of the Mercer Island lines, when you say, Glenn, when you say the lines have been flushed, that is different than saying all the cul-de-sac lines have been flushed, I think. So can you clarify what flushing means? And when the report comes out from the city that the lines have been flushed, what that means to those folks who live at the end of the cul-de-sac?
We would start with our assessment of chlorine residuals. And for us to check all those cul-de-sacs would be very, very timely. To flush all those cul-de-sacs would be extremely timely. So if the direction came that we needed to do that, even with the assistance of neighboring volunteered utilities who have stepped forward for us, we would likely be talking leaks.
Okay. We just, when we get the all-clear sign after flushing, I think the city needs to really communicate to our citizens their responsibilities in flushing, getting completely flushed, right?
Is there a, is there a, is there a consumer component to flushing that actually would be of assistance that we know of?
Again, typically, in our corrosion programs, we suggest that people flush until the water changes temperature. And so that's to try to flush the water from the distribution line. So that's where you're typically, from your meter into the house and through the building plumbing, to try to, to counteract the thoughts of corrosion concerns. So that's some guidance that's typically out there. And again, I think Terry's looking at bringing that fresh chlorinated water into the area, but certainly flushing everything would be a challenge, would take some time. We're going to hope that through, you know, all this while, while we're flushing, while the main stems are being flushed and the large, larger lines, that people will continue to be using the water in those cul-de-sacs. And so some degree of flushing will take place as people continue to use water for irrigation and for bathing and for other uses. So some of that flushing is occurring now, not clearly at the velocity that we may be looking at in terms of the flushing program, but that water is continually being displaced.
Okay, let's release the three of you. Thank you very much for being here. Let you get back to the, the work of getting your folks to do what they need to do in the field. So thank you. And invite up our representative from the Seattle-King County Health Department. And I'm sorry, I don't know your name. Induce yourself.
My name is Becky Elias and I manage a food program with Public Health Seattle and King County. And I just wanted to give an update, but also to thank all of the restaurants that have really been incredibly cooperative over the past week, both with the closure last weekend and in response to this recent boil order. So what we've had happening today is that our goal has been to work with establishments to get them up and running safely as quickly as we can. So we've asked that restaurants that are interested in operating with a limited menu to contact our offices and we are having inspectors work with them. We've heard from 26 food establishments so far and our inspectors have been in touch with all of them. A number of them have been approved to open with limited menus. A couple of them have chosen to not operate yet at this time and we'll follow up. We've had 12 inspectors in the field and three inspectors on call to take any questions that are coming in. And now that we've heard from and reached out to all of these initial restaurants that have requested assistance to operate with a limited menu, we're now doing follow-up calls to the restaurants that we haven't yet heard from to see if they have questions or to let them know what some of their options might be in order to reopen.
Thank you. Questions? Benson, then Dan.
I'm just curious with the limited menu, I mean, what does that actually mean? And in terms of, you think that usage, usage of water is necessary either in washing dishes or washing people's hands or food products? And so I'm just curious, what does it all mean when you say limited menu?
Sure, sure. So we're looking at a few different things. One of the initial things that we've been looking at for our establishments that we've been getting up and running earlier are establishments that can be serving commercially prepackaged foods. So for establishments like Starbucks, for example, or Zal Pizza, where they have other facilities and other kitchen sites that are producing their food, they're able to deliver those food items. those food items that have been commercially prepared and prepackaged elsewhere onto establishment sites here. So those types of food products and establishments, we worked with most quickly to aim to get them up and running in that capacity. And then what we've also been looking at, and we've been working in partnership with the State Department of Health, are the options for restaurants for their dishwashing facilities based on the temperature of the water, based on the sanitation system that they have in place in those dishwashers, options for them to have dishwashing capacity and also to have hand washing capacity. And we're working with our establishments on what their setups are based on each of their individual operations, so that they could do hand washing with soap that they have, hand sanitizer that they're following up on any hand washing with. We've also talked with our establishments about foods that need to be discarded that they've had in their storage, and making sure that they're doing appropriate labeling and identification of what their food inventory was, and discarding those items, sanitizing the space, but then working with new product that's coming in, and talking through the steps with them for what products can be washed and used, what needs to be discarded, and then how they can move forward with further preparation of the items that they have. Those are some examples of, of criteria that we're looking at for establishments to help them operate with as much of their menu as they can safely.
Dan?
Are there any kinds of water filters these establishments can purchase to, are there water filters that would, would screen out E. coli?
I can't speak to that directly. We have been talking with the State Department of Health around guidance for water filters or things that they would need to change once the boil order is lifted for any of their filters. We haven't yet looked into water filters that they could buy and start using. Because so many of the restaurants have plumbing that is an auto-feed into different devices that they have in their restaurants, be it their dishwasher, some of the soda and beverage machines, things like that, we would have to look into what the filtration options could be and at what point they are attached to their system so that it's reaching all of the plumbing items that they would have in their facility. But we haven't looked into that yet.
How does it also work for in the supermarkets where there are fruits and vegetables, the vegetables that are being sprayed on a minute or so? Are those?
You obviously don't do the grocery shop.
I haven't gone in the grocery shop.
Yeah, good question. So we have been, we've been working with QFC and with Albertson's and Freshies and within any of the grocery store and store-type places. We've worked with them on stopping their Mr. Systems, and also have gone through the steps with them of products that do need to be discarded, and also products that they do have the option to wash and have available. So we've had inspectors on site for all of those, and have been talking with the regional coordinator for QFC about their produce sections.
Debbie, and then Mike? Mike?
Is E. coli killed at 120 in the hot water tank?
We're having people, we're making sure that everything that we're doing temperature-wise for food is at, at 155. So we've been looking at that for our pizzas, anything that's going in the oven and produce is being cooked on top of those pizzas. We're looking at 155 at this point.
I'm kind of asking you from a residential perspective, because there's been a move to draw water heaters down to 120. I keep mine at 140 for health reasons. I'm wondering whether that should go out, that we recommend that it's up to 140?
I can follow up on that with you. I don't have that answer right now.
Debbie?
It is a minor question, and you may well not be the right person to perhaps direct us, and that is, in some of the announcements, it's referred to, I believe, industrial-grade detergent for dishwashers, et cetera. And I've gotten questions from several people, what is that? Does that include my Cascade pellets from Costco? So makes sense that we can actually get some detail or some specificity about what it is that people need to be using in their dishwashers or other devices, perhaps even laundry machines?
Okay, we can follow up with technical answers to those questions as well.
Sure.
Benson?
Just a follow-up question. So, I mean, it's great that you're meeting with the, some of the restaurant owners, and are you going to be continuing to do follow-up monitoring of whether or not they're in compliance? I guess concerned from a consumer perspective is, it's great that you've set this up, but, you know, you want to make sure that they're actually following through with your restrictions.
Yeah, we are. Thank you for asking that. So with each establishment that we're going to today, our inspectors are writing up a report that's specific to each of those establishments, based on what practices they've agreed on from looking at those operations. So we do have documentation of that for our establishments that we visited today. And then our intention is to have inspectors on call doing sweeps of the island tomorrow to monitor the enforcement of those plans that we've agreed upon today with the inspector sites. One thing that I failed to mention before that I just wanted to let you know is that we've also been in coordination with the Mercer Island Farmers Market that's happening on Sunday. So we've been talking with them. They will be able to remain open, and so we've been talking with them about how they can remain open. That'll be the case for most, all of their vendors. We anticipate for their food trucks also. And so we've been coordinating with them of what their hand washing setups will be, and we'll have an inspector on site with them through the weekend, so that we're just in anticipation, prepared to have the farmers market maintained being open.
Great. Anything else, council members? Thank you very much. And I just would add to, you mentioned 12 inspectors in the field. I know that's a lot of folks out there, operating in one community, and we certainly appreciate the response you've given, and making that as easy as possible to have that one-on-one outreach with the businesses. So thank you.
Thank you.
We'll let you get back to work now.
Appreciate it.
Ross, are you ready to talk communications and how we're doing on that?
Yeah, and maybe we'll ask Jennifer Franklin to join him too.
Okay, Ross Freeman, City Communications Manager.
Jennifer Franklin, Emergency Manager for the City of Mercer Island.
I'll go ahead and just give a, a quick overview of the kinds of outreach that we've done. I imagine most people have now heard about most of those, but just to give a review of the avenues that we've used. And just to start off, I mean, the auto-dialer system still remains kind of the backbone of an emergency contact network. One of the lessons learned from the first round of this was that the, the system we are currently subscribed to didn't perform according to the level that we would like. So we immediately switched gears and have used King County's system that, that will, has auto-dialed all landlines that are known to the system. So that's kind of part one, and we have a lot of reports from people, those really did come through. The website serves as the primarily, the primary communications outlet for the latest official news, and so that's where we're posting updates on a continued basis. That's where I steer media to if we don't have a, a press release underway at the time. That's where press releases are posted and other snippets. When we're coming out of last round, that's where we started to post, well, how do you, how do you prepare your house again now that the supply has been deemed safe? How do you restore service, if you like? And that has some of those questions about flushing your own pipes and about the hot water heater in your house, about your ice maker, your refrigerator water system, that kind of thing. And of course, we'll run those instructions again when we get to that point. Social media has been a, a, a very powerful outlet for this incident. Certainly on the island, we have plenty of people that don't have a computer at all, don't have a, a smartphone or a cellphone. But for those that do, this is an example of how powerful that is, and we're certainly encouraging, for example, Jennifer's volunteers, to make sure they all are on our Twitter feed. Just, just a few snapshots there. Within several hours of me posting the original alert a week ago, that posting had been shared 5,000 times. And that doesn't mean 5,000 residents, but it had been retransmitted 5,000 times in a couple of hours, which is just a phenomenal distribution through crowdsourcing, if you like. The Twitter feed that we have, again, we really use that in a limited fashion until this point. We've had hundreds and hundreds of people now subscribe to the Twitter feeds because we've been encouraging them that it's an easy, instant way to get communications out. And generally, we'll post something and then point to a deeper source of information. We've used all city email lists that we, that we have. Some of those lists have a lot of overlap, so some people are going to get these announcements a lot, but that's better that way than the other. We have solved some of the problems that happened the first round last week when we weren't able to access some of those lists, or we were unclear on the nature of how they were sent out. We've even used now the, the utility lists from the, the files that we have of contact information for people in the billing system for the water utility. So that was another couple thousand people there. Again, a lot of them are probably going to be on other lists, but cover our bases. Of course, press releases have been extensive, and I think in the course of this now, in the last nine days, I think we've issued five or six full press releases. I would say that media coverage, from my perspective, has been relentless, and probably in a good way. I mean, really, we've been on all the major TV channels, we've had repeated stories, all the major news radio networks, NPR has covered this, AP, local and regional press, we made it on to the national news today. So if anybody doesn't know about this now, then I would be very surprised and would love to meet them. So, and then really, we follow up with some of those traditional methods. Jennifer can talk about this a little bit more. This time around, even more posters than before, flyers on doors, this time around sandwich boards, the, the reader board, the powered reader board signs at some of the on-ramps and off-ramps. We had in-person visits from I'm not sure how many volunteers, door-to-door visits to our vulnerable populations, low-mobility elderly, and as those visits-
Do you know how many vulnerable people were visited?
I believe we had on our list, and we had Cindy Goodwin and her staff actually call the list that we, the grouping we have. So they were phone-called first, and then they actually went out. And I believe there was only about 20 people or 20 different people that needed to be visited, and we had 23 volunteers that actually were assisting with going out and providing water to them, et cetera, so. Did that answer your question, Councilmember?
Yeah, it seems kind of low. I mean, we have 20 simply in the wheels, needles for wheels. I'm thinking there's more than that.
Right. There might be two. It's just a list that I don't really maintain, but it's just a group of people we have, so.
There was direct outreach to daycares and care centers, assisted living centers, all those kind of non-traditional living situations, if you like, or other places where groups of people congregate. We're now on the local high school radio station with a repeated broadcast, and I guess I would wrap the overview of the outreach that we've changed the main city phone number, the one that's been published forever, that addresses this issue and points people to the phone bank in the room behind you. And if people call that directly, that's the 275-7800 number that we've been using for eight or nine days now. And that, that's been staffed from nine to nine the last couple of days. We're probably going to pull back nine to seven over the next few days. It's a, it's a very effective way, again, of really addressing those people who still use the phone and only the phone to, to get their information, and perhaps they, they don't watch TV or listen to the radio. The phone bank is great for that. And for those complicated follow-up questions, and those tips, as Terry mentioned, the tips from the public about, oh, gosh, maybe I do have a questionable backflow assembly. And maybe I'd just wrap with passing it on to Jennifer, the, one of the ways that we've seen the community really contribute here is those who are trained through her emergency volunteer program and who took a little bit of extra initiative. We have the story I put out a few days ago of a volunteer. She got the Twitter announcement a few minutes after the press release went out. She printed the press release, visited her neighbors, left the flyer if people weren't home, and then went to the nearby high school where there was some athletic games on and got it on the announcement. So there's one person who, who in 20 minutes probably reached a few hundred people by herself. And that's the kind of, you know, individualized action that I think the, the program endorses and trains for.
I'd like to add to that as well, unless you have questions for Ross before I go ahead and start. Okay. I'm adding to that, that our emergency volunteer network, as you know, is fabulous in terms of, of situations like this. It was really, we had people mobilize on their own. When they got the actual Twitter message, our first situation that happened, we had them going out door-to-door to the neighborhoods, and really that's what we're asking our neighbors, our community and our citizens to do. And I know we've been kind of saying the same message for six years I've been doing this, but I think this was a good way to see that it does work in some situations. Could we have more people do this? Could we have more neighborhoods organized? Yes. And I think that's from all of us. I mean, city council, the people that live here, really reaching out to our neighborhoods and realizing, this is your community, and these are the people that you need to take care of. We don't have a lot of city staff to be able to go out door-to-door, so having these volunteers was phenomenal, and just having our neighbors and our citizens do this too. And so that was kind of a big message for us was, yes, you know, in the first instance when we had this, the message did not go out the way that we had expected it to. I think in this, round two, here we go, corrective actions. If I can say that the after-action report, I think our after-action report is completely completed in terms of our communication end of it. We've learned so much, and it really worked well. You know, we ended up getting the results that mean that we could actually post. By 12:15, we had our release out, and we had the information going out over the My State King County system. So we are still working on some things in terms of investigating what other systems are out there, and we can definitely discuss that more, you know, in the future reference, how do we want to alert our public? There are other methods out there that might be better, and so that's one thing to look at. In terms of what we're doing for, from an operation and emergency operation standpoint, I just wanted you to be aware of the fact that we did activate yesterday at nine in the morning. Some of us were here a lot earlier, but we activated officially at nine in the morning, and when we do that, we alert King County and the state. They give us a mission number, which allows us then to go ahead and access other people's volunteers and, and resources if we need them. So that's been done. King County's in full support of us to help us with our emergency operations center, and the Zone 1 Coordinator, Mike Ryan, is actually helping us in our EOC as well. And so that's been very useful. We have volunteers that are assisting, we've got quite a bit of staff, so I think we're pretty good on that end. And we will keep the EOC open. Usually I'm going to close down. It's going to be probably tonight at seven, and we'll see if we need to stay open longer. But I'm hoping if we have to go through the weekend, we'll definitely staff in support of our volunteers, of our restaurants, of our maintenance department, and really that's what the emergency operations center does, is to support and help and do whatever we can to get this, this resolved in a safe manner. So from my end, that's what we're doing. We've got a lot of help from the community. We had Boy Scouts out there last night handing out water to people, so we, we do have a lot of community support. And in answer to Councilmember Britton's comment, reference, what can our neighbors do? What else can they do? I would say it's just getting to know who your neighbors are, really getting to know who is in your community, who needs help. We would like to know, back to Mike's, or Councilmember Sarah's comments, who are our vulnerable people? Because it has to be for them electively telling us. We don't know that offhand unless somebody lets us know. I would love to have an actually bigger idea of who those people are that we need to visit. And so, yeah, it's getting the neighbors to do that, so that would be my big plug.
Thank you both. Questions for Ross and Jennifer?
Thank you both for all your work on this. And I do agree on the second round, it seems like, you know, we hit the ground running and there were a lot of improvements and a lot of great new things that, that we saw, so thank you for that and adapting so quickly. I know I heard a couple of questions, and I was hoping you could just explain to the community about, we do have the emergency well and why that was not activated in this kind of situation.
Right, so our emergency well, and usually Terry or Glenn can answer that as well, probably a little more scientific detail, but we don't activate that unless we do not have water to the island. So if our water's shut off, that's when we activate the well. And in this situation, it's not potable water, so even if you're truly going to disperse the water, they still have to boil it. So it was, it didn't make any sense. And so for that reason, the mains department decided as well, as myself, that it was, it didn't make sense to actually activate that well.
I can just chime in, since I've heard Glenn speak about this. We don't have permission from Department of Colony to use the well unless all water is cut off, and then there's probably some regulatory procedure that goes through, but we still have water, so that's not triggered. And as Jennifer mentioned, it's, it's not potable water, anyway.
Other questions? Benson, and then Dan.
I'm just curious, you know, I was at the community center yesterday in the evening and saw people handing out water, so that was fantastic. I guess, is that going to occur during the rest of the weekend as far as making water available to the community?
We'll check and see if that's something that we can do. The whole goal behind the water being passed out at the community center was truly not meant for just anybody that decides they want to come up and just, oh, I don't want to go to Costco, so I'm going to go up to the community center. This is meant for vulnerable populations. This was meant for people that may not be able to get off the island, that maybe they can't afford it, and maybe they have trouble boiling their water, for whatever reason. So we put a big sign out there now that basically says- So we put a big sign out there now that basically says, Mercer Island Vulnerable Populations. Not that we would turn people away, but just hopefully people will realize, if you have the means to go get water elsewhere, please do so, because this is for people that truly don't have that ability. So we'll see if it's a need. By tonight, we'll be able to know how much is left and whether we need to purchase some more for tomorrow.
And that's highlighted in the latest press release, too, about that water, who it's intended for. And actually, Councilmember Sarah, we do have, I mentioned the farmers market in the press release, so that's already kind of out in the system. We'll put it on the website, too, for sure. Or was that you, Dan, who was?
Yeah, I would mention it, yeah.
Okay, sorry. And then we did have an offer from Whole Foods Market that residents can go use those in-store filtering systems for free at their Bellevue and Southlake Union outlets, and that's in the recent press release, too. So that's a convenience for some people.
Dan?
It just also, at least as of 9:00 this morning, there were pallets of water in front of Albertsons. So it looks like the grocery stores got themselves restocked. The, I've had several emails from people saying, someone in my family's sick. How do I know whether I've got E. coli? And I'm just, I don't know what the answer to that is. I'm curious, I'm sure you're getting calls like that in the EOC, and what are you telling people?
Well, maybe I'll take that first. So the media likes that angle, too. So really, the talking points on this are that every day, we check in with public health, who is the collector of that information, and under a situation like this, urgent care facilities, hospitals, family doctors are being required to transmit reports that, occurrences that they have in their care, so that public health can collect that information. I believe they have 48 or 72 hours to send that information to public health. As it stands right now, and this was true this morning, there is still not a confirmed case attached to a person who is from Mercer Island, and a confirmed case means you need a lab test. So certainly, there, we do get calls, people who are sick, and at any given time, according to our Department of Health colleagues, 1% to 2% of the population in an area has some kind of gastrointestinal issue going on. So that's always out there. But in terms of those lab test confirmed cases of residents in this time period, we still don't have one.
Do you tell people if they feel ill, they should go to their doctor and just get a lab test?
Exactly. And that's what we're telling people in the phone booth as well as on the press release, is you've got to go to your doctor, go ahead and check yourself out and make sure, and what the actual situation is, so. And at that point, the doctors then are required to go ahead and let public health know.
No? Okay. Ross, Jennifer, any wrap-up comments?
Yeah, I have one piece, and I'll attribute this to Tana. The interesting thing about this situation is that, and there may not be any other situation like this that I could imagine where it's kind of a silent event, and this is all about huge amounts of media and outreach and communication in one direction, going out from the city to everybody who lives on the island for something they don't know about. You know, you think about an earthquake, eruption, a huge windstorm, I don't know what else could happen, but along those lines, floods. You know, a large number of people would already know this event, this act of God, if you like, is underway. But here, and they would be contacting us, and a lot of our practicing has been for, how do we handle huge volumes of inbound traffic and handle the way of responding? This has really been much more about how do we distribute massive amounts of information in a short time efficiently to everybody on our island who didn't know about this situation? So it's really good experience and great lessons will be learned from this and have been already.
Anything else?
I just want to thank everybody and all of our volunteers and really the staff and the citizens for all the help they've given us during this whole thing. I know everybody's been working a ton, and just really appreciate. I think we're all coming together as a community really, really well, so I just want to thank everyone for that.
Great. And I want to build on that just a little bit, too, and essentially say the same thing, but our citizens have remained calm, level-headed, and, you know, for the most part, nonplussed about the frustrations and hassles of going through this, and we certainly thank them for their patience in dealing with this. It is a hassle, but you've handled it well, and we appreciate that. Staff, lots of folks involved, with lots of hours spent. We certainly appreciate the time you've put in, and thank you very much for all your efforts. Volunteers, I understand, more than 20 volunteers have been active over the last few days, answering phones, outreach to people, handing out water, and so thank you to those folks. Our partners, Health Department at the state level and Seattle and King County, thank you very much. We have heard nothing but good reports about how the interaction between the different groups has gone and the way you've deployed folks, so thank you. And especially a thank you to our businesses. The businesses have taken the hardest hit, I think we would say, through this. The financial impact on them has been significant. There's been talk already of the need after this is over for a get-out-and-eat-at-your-local restaurants sort of affair, and I think that's an excellent idea and one that we will want to promote heavily. So rest assured, we're going to try and have your backs as we get out of this, but I know everyone is sensitive to the fact this is hard at this time, and we appreciate the fact that the businesses have been, you know, working well with the Health Department and trying to get through this as best they can, and they can for everybody else. So thank you to them. Anything else? Tana?
If I just want to add, I thought it was also interesting that as there was kind of the run on the grocery stores for bottled water, it highlighted, I'm sure, not only to me, but to Officer Franklin as well, that we talked about emergency preparedness, and I think this is, again, another opportunity to realize that if we didn't have water at home that we could drink, then we probably are not prepared for an emergency. And so, you know, it was great to have, still have the access at the stores, but if we didn't have that access nor were we prepared at home, we would be in a lot more trouble. So hopefully, we'll be able to capitalize on this, you know, this kind of emergency to mobilize people to get ready for a different, stronger one. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Last thing I would just mention is, council members said they wanted this meeting today, and staff members, I think by and large, gave a bit of a groan at that. I think it has gone well. I think we've managed to actually to create some television for the public that will help to answer their questions, and I certainly appreciate the fact the staff came together as quickly as you did, since we just asked for this this morning and put together all the answers and presentation that you've had. So thank you very much for that. With that, till Monday night, when I'll see you all again, we are adjourned. Thank you.